We'd like to call the J- July seventeenth, twenty twenty three U forty six Board of Education meeting to order. Roll call please.
Ms. Martin here. Ms. Nolan here. Ms. Owens here. Ms. Khan here. Ms. Schwartz here. Ms. Thomas here. President Kerr.
Here. Can I have a motion to move into closed session to discuss individual student disciplinary matters, pending probable or imminent litigation, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational or educational setting, or specific volunteers with the public or legal counsel for the public body, the purchase, release of real property for the use of the school board, the setting of a price for the sale or lease of real property owned by the school board, an internal audit, control weaknesses, identification of potential fraud risk areas, known and suspected frauds and fraud interviews, collective negotiating matters between the school board and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees, review of closed session minutes and individual student matters. So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Ms. Martin, yes. Ms. Nolan, yes. Ms. Owens, yes. Ms. Khan, yes. Ms. Schwartz, yes. Ms. Thomas, yes. President Kerr, yes. We're in closed session at six oh one P M.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I would like to resume the July 17th meeting if people could stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America and to the Constitution of this country. The first item on the agenda is strategic plan report, Dr. Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President and the Board of Education. Tonight we begin with our monthly facility planning update. Dr. Williams, Deputy Superintendent of Operations and Mr. Lindholm, Chief of Staff will present to the Board of Education an update on facility planning.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. This is the July installment of monthly updates on our facilities work that we will continue to bring to the Board of Education on a monthly basis. Before we make any decisions to build new schools, we would ensure that the optimal conditions outlined here are in place. We would only build a new school on a site that includes adequate green space, parking lots, easements, playgrounds, athletic fields, et cetera, to support an elementary school capable of supporting 450 students or a middle school capable of supporting at least 750 students. We'd also want to build on a location near where our students live and ideally not on busy roads to allow for safe access during arrival and dismissal.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but the presentation's not on, it's in here, but it's not on. I don't think it's being broadcast. Sorry. I just noticed that it wasn't on this screen, so I assumed that the public didn't see it. Okay. Oh, the double sided.
These two are on.
Thank you. I can start over. Some. Again, this is, okay. Perfect, perfect. Tonight we will provide an update on our ongoing work to identify suitable locations to replace some of our oldest schools. We will explain how the district will proceed to explore potential properties, including how letters of intent may be used. And finally, we will wrap up with a reminder of how the Unite U46 community engagement process will again be a key element in the work for the upcoming school year. Before we make any decisions to build new schools, we would ensure that the optimal conditions outlined on this slide are in place. We would only build a school on a site that includes adequate green space, parking lots, easements, playgrounds, athletic fields, et cetera, to support an elementary school capable of supporting 450 students or a middle school capable of supporting at least 750 students. We'd also want to build on a location near where our students live and ideally not on busy roads to allow for safe access during arrival and dismissal. I'm sorry to interrupt, but the presentation's not on, it's in here, but it's not on. I don't think it's being broadcast. Sorry. I just noticed that it wasn't on this screen, so I assumed that the public didn't see it. Okay. Oh, the double sided.
These two are on.
Thank you. I can start over. Some. Again, this is, okay. Perfect, perfect. Tonight we will provide an update on our ongoing work to identify suitable locations to replace some of our oldest schools. We will explain how the district will proceed to explore potential properties, including how letters of intent may be used. And finally, we will wrap up with a reminder of how the Unite U46 community engagement process will again be a key element in the work for the upcoming school year. Before we make any decisions to build new schools, we would ensure that the optimal conditions outlined here are in place. We would only build a new school on a site that includes adequate green space, parking lots, easements, playgrounds, athletic fields, et cetera, to support an elementary school capable of supporting 450 students or a middle school capable of supporting at least 750 students. We'd also want to build on a location near where our students live and ideally not on busy roads to allow for safe access during arrival and dismissal. I'm sorry to interrupt, but the presentation's not on, it's in here, but it's not on. I don't think it's being broadcast. Sorry. I just noticed that it wasn't on this screen, so I assumed that the public didn't see it. Okay. Oh, the double sided. There it goes.
These two are on.
Thank you. I can start over. Some. Again, this is, okay. Perfect, perfect. Tonight we will provide an update on our ongoing work to identify suitable locations to replace some of our oldest schools. We will explain how the district will proceed to explore potential properties, including how letters of intent may be used. And finally, we will wrap up with a reminder of how the Unite U46 community engagement process will again be a key element in the work for the upcoming school year. Before we make any decisions to build new schools, we would ensure that the optimal conditions outlined on this slide are in place. We would only build a school on a site that includes adequate green space, parking lots, easements, playgrounds, athletic fields, et cetera, to support an elementary school capable of supporting 450 students or a middle school capable of supporting 750 students. We'd also want to build on a location near where our students live and ideally not on busy roads to allow for safe access during arrival and dismissal. I'm sorry to interrupt, but the presentation's not on, it's in here, but it's not on. I don't think it's being broadcast. Sorry. I just noticed that it wasn't on this screen, so I assumed that the public didn't see it. Okay. Oh, the double sided.
These two are on.
Thank you. I can start over. Some. Again, this is, okay. Perfect, perfect. Tonight we will provide an update on our ongoing work to identify suitable locations to replace some of our oldest schools. We will explain how the district will proceed to explore potential properties, including how letters of intent may be used. And finally, we will wrap up with a reminder of how the Unite U46 community engagement process will again be a key element in the work for the upcoming school year. Before we make any decisions to build new schools, we would ensure that the optimal conditions outlined on this slide are in place. We would only build a school on a site that includes adequate green space, parking lots, easements, playgrounds, athletic fields, et cetera, to support an elementary school capable of supporting 450 students or a middle school capable of supporting at least 750 students. We'd also want to build on a location near where our students live and ideally not on busy roads to allow for safe access during arrival and dismissal. I'm sorry to interrupt, but the presentation's not on, it's in here, but it's not on. I don't think it's being broadcast. Sorry. I just noticed that it wasn't on this screen, so I assumed that the public didn't see it. Okay. Oh, the double sided.
These two are on.
Thank you. I can start over. Some. Again, this is, okay. Perfect, perfect. Tonight we will provide an update on our ongoing work to identify suitable locations to replace some of our oldest schools. We will explain how the district will proceed to explore potential properties, including how letters of intent may be used. And finally, we will wrap up with a reminder of how the Unite U46 community engagement process will again be a key element in the work for the upcoming school year. Before we make any decisions to build new schools, we would ensure that the optimal conditions outlined on this slide are in place. We would only build a school on a site that includes adequate green space, parking lots, easements, playgrounds, athletic fields, et cetera, to support an elementary school capable of supporting 450 students or a middle school capable of supporting 750 students. We'd also want to build on a location near where our students live and ideally not on busy roads to allow for safe access during arrival and dismissal. I'm sorry to interrupt, but the presentation's not on, it's in here, but it's not on. I don't think it's being broadcast. Sorry. I just noticed that it wasn't on this screen, so I assumed that the public didn't see it. Okay. Oh, the double sided.
These two are on.
Thank you. I can start over. Some. Again, this is, okay. Perfect, perfect. Tonight we will provide an update on our ongoing work to identify suitable locations to replace some of our oldest schools. We will explain how the district will proceed to explore potential properties, including how letters of intent may be used. And finally, we will wrap up with a reminder of how the Unite U46 community engagement process will again be a key element in the work for the upcoming school year. Before we make any decisions to build new schools, we would ensure that the optimal conditions outlined on this slide are in place. We would only build a school on a site that includes adequate green space, parking lots, easements, playgrounds, athletic fields, et cetera, to support an elementary school capable of supporting 450 students or a middle school capable of supporting at least 750 students. We'd also want to build on a location near where our students live and ideally not on busy roads to allow for safe access during arrival and dismissal. I'm sorry to interrupt, but the presentation's not on, it's in here, but it's not on. I don't think it's being broadcast. Sorry. I just noticed that it wasn't on this screen, so I assumed that the public didn't see it. Okay. Oh, the double sided.
These two are on.
Thank you. I can start over. Some. Again, this is, okay. Perfect, perfect. Tonight we will provide an update on our ongoing work to identify suitable locations to replace some of our oldest schools. We will explain how the district will proceed to explore potential properties, including how letters of intent may be used. And finally, we will wrap up with a reminder of how the Unite U46 community engagement process will again be a key element in the work for the upcoming school year. Before we make any decisions to build new schools, we would ensure that the optimal conditions outlined on this slide are in place. We would only build a school on a site that includes adequate green space, parking lots, easements, playgrounds, athletic fields, et cetera, to support an elementary school capable of supporting 450 students or a middle school capable of supporting 750 students. We'd also want to build on a location near where our students live and ideally not on busy roads to allow for safe access during arrival and dismissal. I'm sorry to interrupt, but the presentation's not on, it's in here, but it's not on. I don't think it's being broadcast. Sorry. I just noticed that it wasn't on this screen, so I assumed that the public didn't see it. Okay. Oh, the double sided.
These two are on.
Thank you. I can start over. Some. Again, this is, okay. Perfect, perfect. Tonight we will provide an update on our ongoing work to identify suitable locations to replace some of our oldest schools. We will explain how the district will proceed to explore potential properties, including how letters of intent may be used. And finally, we will wrap up with a reminder of how the Unite U46 community engagement process will again be a key element in the work for the upcoming school year. Before we make any decisions to build new schools, we would ensure that the optimal conditions outlined on this slide are in place. We would only build a school on a site that includes adequate green space, parking lots, easements, playgrounds, athletic fields, et cetera, to support an elementary school capable of supporting 450 students or a middle school capable of supporting 750 students. We'd also want to build on a location near where our students live and ideally not on busy roads to allow for safe access during arrival and dismissal. And finally, we need to make sure we are building schools in areas of the district that will be densely populated with our wonderful students, but not right next to other schools with plenty of available capacity. In the next few slides, we will briefly review how school design has changed over the past 140 years, using our own schools as examples. As we've shared previously, we have schools in the district that were built in the late 1800s. The buildings have held up remarkably well, and some of the design elements from that era are very appealing. As an example, the detailed brickwork and large windows that you see at schools like Washington. In U46, we have some buildings that definitely have that historical charm. Again, Washington Elementary and Abbott Middle School are two great examples in the city of Elgin. With that in mind, one of the dilemmas we are facing is that school districts historically build schools on very small sites because most were neighborhood schools where students walked to school, and there was also little perceived need for outdoor play areas at the time. We know that things have changed significantly since that time. The next era of school design in the 40s and 50s resulted in highly standardized designs, greater effort to control cost. Hanover Countryside Elementary, shown in this slide, is one of our schools built in that era. U46 had several schools built in the 1970s with a similar design. As you can see here, these schools tended to have fewer windows and less natural light, as well as an open floor plan that was being promoted at the time. As a result, we have schools in U46 where the classrooms don't have doors, and the students actually have to walk through one classroom to access another room, which is not an ideal learning environment for our students. We only have a handful of schools that were built in the 2000s. As you can see from this slide, Hilltop Elementary is one of them, and it was built in 2003 and is one of our newest schools. Hilltop is a beautiful school with tons of natural light, wide open learning spaces, safety and security features such as a secure vestibule at the main entrance, and it sits on more than 18 acres. It is one of our few elementary or middle schools that meet or exceed the current guidelines for acreage.
These two are on.
Thank you. I can start over. Some. Again, this is, okay.
Perfect, perfect. Tonight, we will provide an update on our ongoing work to identify suitable locations to replace some of our oldest schools. We will explain how the district will proceed to explore potential properties, including how letters of intent may be used. And finally, we will wrap up with a reminder of how the Unite U forty-six community engagement process will again be a key element in the work for the upcoming school year. Before we make any decisions to build new schools, we would ensure that the optimal conditions outlined on this slide are in place. We would only build a school on a site that includes adequate green space, parking lots, easements, playgrounds, athletic fields, et cetera, to support an elementary school capable of supporting four hundred and fifty students or a middle school capable of supporting seven hundred and fifty students. We'd also want to build on a location near where our students live and ideally not on busy roads to allow for safe access during arrival and dismissal. And finally, we need to make sure we are building schools in areas of the district that will be densely populated with our wonderful students, but not right next to other schools with plenty of available capacity. In the next few slides, we will briefly review how school design has changed over the past one hundred forty years, using our own schools as examples. As we've shared previously, we have schools in the district that were built in the late eighteen, eighteen hundreds. The buildings have held up remarkably well, and some of the design elements from that era are very appealing. As an example, the detailed brickwork and large windows that you see at schools like Washington. In U forty-six, we have some buildings that definitely have that historical charm. Again, Washington Elementary and Abbott Middle School are two great examples in the city of Elgin. With that in mind, one of the dilemmas we are facing is that school districts historically build schools on very small sites because most were neighborhood schools where students walked to school, and there was also little perceived need for outdoor play areas at the time. We know that things have changed significantly since that time. The next era of school design in the forties and fifties resulted in highly standardized designs, greater effort to control cost. Hanover Countryside Elementary, shown in this slide, is one of our schools built in that era. U forty-six had several schools built in the nineteen seventies with a similar design. As you can see here, these schools tended to have fewer windows and less natural light, as well as an open floor plan that was being promoted at the time. As a result, we have schools in U forty-six where the classrooms don't have doors, and the students actually have to walk through one classroom to access another room, which is not an ideal learning environment for our students. We only have a handful of schools that were built in the two thousands. As you can see from this slide, Hilltop Elementary is one of them, and it was built in two thousand and three and is one of our newest schools. Hilltop is a beautiful school with tons of natural light, wide open learning spaces, safety and security features such as a secure vestibule vestibule at the main entrance, and it sits on eighteen, more than eighteen acres. It is one of our few elementary or middle schools that meet or exceed the current guidelines for acreage of schools. This short tour of school design trends over the years was only to illustrate the types of considerations we are working through as we determine how to best replace some of our old buildings. In the next few slides, we'll talk about letters of intent. And a letter of intent is an additional step if you compare the commercial real estate process to the residential process. So prior to putting together an official purchasing contract, a letter of agreement is submitted, a letter of intent, I'm sorry, is submitted. And a letter of intent is a non-binding agreement, and it has been described by our outside counsel as slightly insignificant. And it's described that way because a key component of the letter of intent is the due diligence clause. And that clause provides a certain amount of time to have surveys done on the property, soil samples, things of that nature. And during the due diligence period, you can back out of the purchase for no reason at all. So that is why our attorneys describe it as slightly insignificant. The due diligence, the letter of intent includes a sixty day due diligence period with the option to extend for an additional sixty days, and it includes a thirty days to close post due diligence period. If a letter of intent is approved, the next steps in the process would follow what you would typically see in a residential process. You would put together the purchase and sale agreement, deliver the earnest money, and move forward from there. So today, later today, our Board of Education will consider a request authorizing administration to move forward with a letter of intent to purchase a subdivided portion of the property located at nine oh one Center Street, also known as the Old Sherman Hospital site. This is the portion of the property south of Slade Avenue that contains two large parking lots today. Similar to the earlier letter of intent for the entire Sherman property, should the board authorize the agreement and the purchase price and the terms be accepted by the seller, the next steps would include execution of a purchase and sale agreement, contingent on approval of zoning, and soon thereafter, we would go through the process of starting due diligence and providing the earnest money. In addition, the board will also consider a request to move forward with a letter of intent to purchase to purchase a twelve acre parcel of land at twenty six oh four Rorson Road in Elgin. This is in unincorporated Elgin. We view this as a potential strategic acquisition for U forty-six as it directly, as it, ah, excuse me, as it's directly adjacent to Hilltop Elementary and includes a substantial acreage with an Elgin address and is not located on a busy road. Again, the steps would involve the letter of agree, the letter of intent, a due diligence period, earnest bonds, and the other remaining steps that we discussed. The next series of slides serve as a reminder of the goals established by the Unite U forty-six Committee and presented to the Board of Education in December, along with the status update. I will hand it over to Mr. Lindholm for this portion of the update.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. So as a practice, we'd like to make sure to include regular reminders with each of our facility updates in terms of the high level goals that were established through the Unite U forty-six process. Tonight, well, we only have tangible updates on a couple of the items, but we just feel it's important to continue reminding our community what we're working to achieve to honor the process and to honor the the goals that they had established for us. So the first goal, a- as we have shared, was to increase the, uh, by ten million dollars annually, the budget for maintenance and repair of our facilities. So this summer, um, you know, unfortunately, that schedule had already been established, and those projects were already well underway, but we've already begun planning for next summer, and that will be the first time then that we'll be able to tackle more projects with this additional budget. So that will be a tangible output from our successful referendum. Uh, the next couple of goals were to balance enrollments across the district and improve equitable access to programs. These are both primary considerations as we work on refining our attendance boundaries in advance of the shift of sixth graders to the middle schools in two years. As we've shared previously, we're committed to providing more than one year advance notice to families and staff before we'd make any boundary changes. So this will mean we will plan to bring boundary recommendations to the board in the early spring of twenty twenty-four, uh, that would take effect then in the fall of twenty twenty-five. The next goal is to expand our pre-K offerings, and as we've shared previously, we were able to identify four existing classrooms that we will use this coming school year to host additional pre-K classes, uh, at Ontarioville, Laurel Hill, Illinois Park, and Hilltop. And this will result in a hundred and thirty-four more slots or approximately ten percent, um, more pre-K students, um, that will be able to serve based on previous enrollments. And then, as we've shared, one of the major goals that was confirmed by the Unite U forty-six Committee was, um, the concept of shifting our sixth graders out of elementary schools and into our middle schools. We've shared previously why this needs to be one of the first priority areas to address to carry out the full Unite U forty-six vision and and recommendations. We need to ensure that all of our middle schools are well-equipped to receive approximately twenty-four hundred more students when we roll up our sixth grade students in the fall of twenty twenty-five. This will also free up space in our elementary schools to allow more pre-K offerings and will also help us better determine how many elementary schools we will need to operate going forward. And one of the final goals then was to ensure ongoing communication and community engagement throughout the process. So in June, we held our first Unite U forty-six session, uh, since passing the referendum, and we're committed to running several more during this upcoming school year. We're busy now planning the next session to occur in September, uh, and it will focus on the process of revising our school boundaries, which is something we haven't done for several years in U forty-six. So during the session, we will provide data highlighting some of our current challenges and explaining why new boundaries will be needed. We'll also task the community with helping us to prioritize different planning parameters to guide our work and carefully listen to any other suggestions or feedback they may have for us. We know that new boundaries are of great interest and possibly anxiety for students, staff, families, and the community. So we will plan to devote a good portion of this year's Unite U forty-six work, uh, to this important topic. This concludes our brief presentation for tonight, uh, but we're happy to address any questions you may have at this time.
Are there questions? No, thank you. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Hey, the next item is. Public comment? Yes, next item is public comment.
And we do not have any public comments this evening.
We had one written public comment I saw concerning uses of facilities, and I think we've responded to that individual.
We, we, we have, or we will make sure that they receive that response.
Okay, great. Okay. Moving on, other business. Any additional information from the board? I know a number of us were at summer school graduation, was it last week? Summer's going fast, so. Yeah.
Well, um, I, and I will just remind everyone, we are less than a month from the start of the school year, so, um, I'm sure we're all excited. The anticipation is already great, but, uh, August fifteenth will be the start of our school year, and so as we return for August board meetings, you'll also start to get some of those, those, those updates as we prepare to welcome students back.
Okay, for your requests.
Tonight, we have two Freedom of Information Act requests available on the public domain of board docs, and those requests will also be available on our website later this week.
Okay, moving on, consent agenda, Dr. Johnson.
On the consent agenda, we have personnel report and workers' compensation cases, minutes of board meeting, June twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, a list of authorized depositories, resolution for the display and public hearing on school district U forty-six budget for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, proposal from the Assistant Superintendent of Schools for New Meridian, proposal from curriculum and instruction for Scholastic News Purchase, a contract from Operations Risk Management Liability Insurance, contract renewal from Operations Risk Management Property Insurance, contract renewal, Operations Risk Management Workers Compensation Insurance, contract renewal, Curriculum and Instruction, Project Lead the Way Career and Technical Education CTE Resources, contract renewal, Curriculum and Instruction, Marketing Dynamics, Good Heart, Wilcox Career and Technical Education Resources, contract renewal, Curriculum and Instruction, CDW Zoom, contract renewal, Specialized Student Services, Special Education Systems Incorporated, contract renewal, Specialized Student Services, Geneva Hearing Services, contract renewal, Specialized Student Services, Hearing Vision Supervision and Services, contract for plant operations, Center Court Athletic Club Mutual Use Agreement, and a change order for plant operations, Dreamwood High School Gym Floor and Bleacher Replacement, Replacement Project Number Three Eighteen.
Are there any items board members would like to remove from the consent agenda? Hey, could I have motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Barton?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
President Kirk?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Discussion action, Dr. Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. Our first item under discussion action is itemized bills for July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Mr. Burnage, Director of Financial Operations, will respond to questions from the Board of Education regarding the attached bills. Administration recommends the Board of Education approve the list of bills in the amount of twenty million, six hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighty-four cents.
Could I have a motion to approve the list of bills in the amount of twenty million, six hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighty-four cents?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions for Mr. Burnage? Roll call, please.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
President Kirk?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Our next item this evening, we have the Information Systems Pathway Curriculum Proposal. Mr. Briesmeister, Director of Pathways, is joining us and is available for questions relating to the Information Systems Pathway Curriculum Proposal.
Hey, can I have a motion to approve, right, the Information Systems Pathway Curriculum Proposal?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
President Kirk?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Continuing this evening, our next item is the Review of Board Policy Four Colon Five Five Use of Credit and Procurement Cards. Dr. Williams, Deputy Superintendent of Operations, and Ms. Olson, Chief Legal Officer, will provide the Board of Education with a recommendation to amend Board Policy Four Colon Five Five Use of Credit and Procurement Cards.
Could I have a motion to approve the amendment to Board Policy Four Point Five Five Use of Credit and Procurement Cards?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
President Kirk?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Our next item is the Minutes of Board Committee Meeting. Attached to the Board of Education's review are the following Board Committee Meeting Minutes. June twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, Board of Education Finance Committee Meeting. Administration recommends the Board of Education accept the minutes.
Can I have a motion to accept the minutes of the June twenty-six, twenty twenty-three Board of Education Finance Committee?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments, discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
President Kirk?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next, we have the Letters of Intent to Purchase Parcels of Property. Dr. Williams, Deputy Superintendent of Operations, will provide the Board of Education information related to the discussion and consideration of the potential purchase of parcels of property and will respond to any additional questions. Administration recommends the Board of Education approve the Letters of Intent to Purchase Parcels of Property.
Good evening. Um, included in your packet is a draft letter of intent, um, to purchase two properties. Uh, the first property in question is a portion of the nine oh one Center Street property in Elgin, um, also known as the Old Sherman, Hot, Old Sherman Hospital site. Uh, we are looking to purchase or to provide a letter of intent for somewhere between five point four and five point nine acres of that property south of Slade Avenue, for future consideration for building new schools. I'd be happy to address any questions that you have at this time relating to that.
Any questions on this property, John?
I just, uh, in general, want to thank the team, uh, especially yourself and, uh, Mr. Lindholm over there for continuing to look at a variety of properties for the board to consider, like, as we're looking to do work on, um, whether it's elementary schools or middle schools and high schools, like all the stuff, i- it's just so important that we're considering all of our options and not just jumping in, and, um, i- it's been, it's just been really interesting to see all the different options we have and then work as a team to try to find really the best option, taking into account all the needs of our district, and I, I just, uh, thank you for all the work, because I know it's a lot of work to visiting all these properties and bringing them forward and changing them out, and so that was, I just wanted to acknowledge the process.
Thank you. We're really excited.
Anyone else? And I, I agree. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, so I have to, can I have, oh, you have to talk about the other property first.
Separately.
You can just grab it down, please.
Okay. The additional letter of intent that we would like the board to consider is for the property located at twenty six oh four Rorson Road in Elgin. Um, this property is roughly twelve point four acres and is adjacent to Hilltop Elementary School. It's completely undeveloped land, um, and we would be required to have engineering and wetland surveys, as we've discussed previously, during the due diligence, um, period. So with that, I'd be happy to address any questions that you have regarding that.
Any questions on this property? Okay. All right, so, do my, can I have a motion to approve the Letters of Intent to purchase par- parcels of property located at nine oh one Center Street in Elgin with approximately five point seven acres south of Slade Avenue and two six oh four Rorson Road in Elgin with approximately twelve point four acres?
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
President Kirk?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, work session, Dr. Johnson.
Our only item under work session bids and proposals this evening is a bid from Information Services, a technology purchase for Chromebooks. Uh, Dr. Williams, Deputy Superintendent of Operations, and Ms. Smith, Procurement Coordinator, will present the attached proposal and will respond to questions from the Board of Education. Administration recommends approval of the contract for Chromebooks to Vivacity Technologies in the amount of two million, eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars, and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the Operations and Maintenance Fund. The cost is included in the budget for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year.
Okay. Do you want to give a presentation or?
I could give a brief one.
Okay.
Well, good evening again. As you recall, student devices were distributed during the COVID pandemic. All of those devices are, um, pretty much in need of replaced, replacement at this time. We are implementing a four-year replacement schedule where every first, fifth, and ninth grader will receive a new machine each year. Um, so we are hoping to use the remaining COVID relief dollars to purchase these, these machines for this year, as well as purchasing some at the end of this year for next year to start to build our replacement schedule so that we have a consistent amount allocated from our budget, um, as well as backup machines from the surplus that we receive back from those students every year. So we're really excited. Um, we did go out to bid. We received bids ranging between three hundred and twenty-six and three hundred and ninety dollars per unit. Uh, we did a thoughtful analysis, and the low bidder was actually eliminated as part of our process due to problems with, um, breakage of the screen. We did a thoughtful analysis and the low bidder was actually eliminated as part of our process due to problems with breakage of the screen on those machines. So the next lowest bidder was deemed the most responsible, and that is who your recommendation is for today. You will note that there is an eight point six percent decrease in the price of what the units are costing today compared to the last time we made purchases for Chromebooks. That is likely due in large part to the extended warranty that we purchased for all of the previous units. Based on our usage, we don't need an extended warranty, so we're not recommending that at this time.
Any questions? Shonda?
I just want to say thank you for answering my questions about the, you know, first, fifth, ninth grade versus students who are not in those grades who have Chromebooks that have, you know, that are older. For families whose students do have Chromebooks, whether they're in the first, fifth, or ninth grade, or the Chromebooks that are older and they're not in those grades, is this going to be communicated on the website under Chromebooks? Or is this something the schools will have to implement?
For, are you asking about students that need to have them replaced and they're not in those grades?
Right.
We will, we can certainly put something on the district website, but we will, we will, we, yeah. We will be working closely with the buildings in the transition of those machines. And once we do transition in the new machines for first, fifth, and ninth, we will be able to go through the machines that they're giving us back to see which ones are maybe only a year old, so that we can transition some of the older ones out of the district. We're doing a full inventory now, and we hope that that inventory is complete by the end of September.
Thank you. I like the plan, and I'm glad that there was a decrease in the price.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Dawn?
So, in the response to Ms. Schwartz's questions, it says that the, so first, fifth, and, first grade makes sense, because first grade, that those students will get the new Chromebooks and that their returned inventory will then be used for replacements as students have issues with their Chromebooks. So Chromebooks are collected from fifth and ninth graders. Is it, do they then go through IT to figure out what's wrong with them, make sure they're usable, make sure they still have updates?
Absolutely.
Is that Chromebooks get exchanged and they go through multiple, a student will go through multiple Chromebooks before they find one that actually works as a replacement? So I'm curious how that process actually works.
Absolutely. Great questions. Coming out of COVID, we don't have all students in one grade with the same machine right now. So when those machines come in, we will determine what year they're from and try to replace the, the newest ones with the oldest ones that are still being utilized by our students. That's why we're putting the plan in place, so every grade will know how old your machine is based on what grade you're in, and will know when you're eligible for a replacement, and we'll have surplus coming in each year that should be only a year old, based on that new schedule.
So students now, say there's a student who's tenth grade, right, or a junior who's been sitting on a Chromebook for a while. Is there, there's still the best method for them if their Chromebook, you know, stops working, just to go directly through their school? Should they be contacting IT? Like, what is actually the preferred method for families?
I think we need to build out a process. Once we have the new machines in place, right now, I think that they were going through their schools, but we definitely need to put a systemic procedure in place for that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I think just very quickly, the other piece that, that ties into the fact that we aren't aware, right, we, we, we did not have a way of monitoring, tracking the age of Chromebooks as they were distributed. That also means that the reserve group of Chromebooks are not necessarily all of the same age as well. So even when students trade in an item with the expectation they're receiving a Chromebook that is likely newer, that currently may not be the case. And so this plan is also going to work to address that and to, to make sure that that, that process works differently than it currently does.
Anyone else?
Hey, thank you. Thank you.
Hey, next item is contracts over twenty-five thousand for work session.
Thank you, Madam President. Our first item is a contract for the American Association of School Administrators, AESA, National Principal Supervisor Academy. Ms. Mystorovich, Assistant Superintendent of Schools, will present the attached proposal and will respond to questions from the Board of Education. Administration recommends approval of the contract with AESA in the amount not to exceed seventy-six thousand dollars, and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the educational fund, and the cost is included in the budget for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year.
Are there any questions? Okay, thank you. This next item.
Continuing, we have another contract from the Office of Schools for a consultant. Ms. Mystorovich, still with us to present the attached proposal and respond to questions from the Board of Education. Administration recommends approval of the contract with Dr. Michelle Thompson of MQD I Four Kids LLC in the amount of seventy thousand dollars, and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the educational fund. The cost will be included in the budget for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year.
Any questions on this item? Hey, thank you.
Continuing, we have another contract for the Office of Schools, Amendment to Service Agreements with Right at School and Boys and Girls Club of Elgin. Administration recommends approval of the contract renewal with Right at School in the amount not to exceed one million, nine hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars, and Boys and Girls Club of Elgin in the amount not to exceed one million, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, one million, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars, for a total of three million, four hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars, and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the educational fund. The cost will be included in the budget for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year.
Any questions on this item? Melissa?
Does this cover all of the rigor for, or schools and that are, of our elementary schools that are schools for rigor and equity?
Yes.
And so as we continue with U forty-six rising, are we bringing on additional rigor for equity schools? And then at that point, would they, like, is this something that we're intending to, to keep in?
So that's a great, that's a great question. We are using SIR funds for this expenditure, and those expire in September of, of twenty twenty-four. And so I don't believe that we're going to be able to do this moving forward unless we figure out a different funding source, but that's, so I don't know that, that we'll be able to continue this after this school year.
Any other questions? Hey.
Continuing then, we have a contract for the Deputy Superintendent of Operations, Projections Staffing and Mapping Software for Barrier Systems. Dr. Williams, Deputy Superintendent of Operations, will present the attached proposal along with Mr. Lindholm, Chief of Staff, to respond to questions from the Board of Education. Administration recommends approval of the contract with Barrier Systems for one year in the amount of fifty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars, and requests authorization for district administration to execute related documents. This expenditure will be charged to the educational fund. The cost will be included in the budget for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year.
Are there any questions? Okay, thank you. All right, that is the last item. The board does have to return to closed session. So I have to, I'm going to have to say. All right, can I have a motion to move into closed session to discuss individual student disciplinary matters, tending probable or imminent litigation, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreation, or educational setting, or specific volunteers at the public or legal counsel for the public body, the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the school board, the setting the price for the sale or lease of real property owned by the school board, an internal audit, control weaknesses, identification of potential fraud risk areas, known or suspected frauds, and fraud interviews, collective negotiating matters between the school board and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees, review of closed session minutes, and individual student matters.
So moved.
Roll call please.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Khan?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
President Kirk?
Yes.